Welcome everyone, this is the meeting with the Board of Selectmen. It is Friday, April 19th, 10:30 a.m. Is the motion to call a meeting to order.
So, second.
All those in favor? This meeting is being audio and video recorded. Please rise for the Feds and the Littics.
Pledge of limitations to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The reason for this meeting is an ASME grievance with Wanda Hamer. Review of matters presented. I will leave the option, Ms. Hamer, for you to have it an open session or executive session, and please say that you want it an open session or executive session.
Open session would be fine.
Request has been made to have it an open session. So, you wanna go to the podium and discuss your rationale on why you should be paid for a sick day on Martin Luther King Day on January 15th, 2024 versus the town's decision not to pay you?
So, um, yes, this is now costing everybody a lot more time than needed to be. It could have been nipped in the bud right away. Had someone spoke to me, or spoke to my supervisor, regardless of what you all think, but the policy states that if you're abusing your sick time, you ought to be notified that you're using it, abusing it, and then if you're abusing it, then you would have to be supplied a doctor's note. I wasn't requested or asked to supply a doctor's note 10 days after the point. At that point, I'm already better. I don't need to go to the doctors. Had I known prior to, I may have gone to the doctors and supplied a note if that was needed, if the policy had changed. I've been paid previously for a holiday pay, being sick before or after. As you know, I've been here 23-plus years. The contract states the same. I've never been notified I've been abusing my time. Oh, you used my sick time. So I've been asked to change the sick time to personal or vacation. I don't need to do that. I was sick. I was sick on the Wednesday. If you noticed, the Thursday before the Friday, I was sick in the morning. I got asked to come in. I came in. Friday, I was out all day. I've lost pay. Trust me, I don't need to be out. I've lost pay in other jobs. So now that the money was stolen from me out of my pay, no longer in my account, if you owed me money, I, you know, I would want it back. So, want it back. If the policy changes, then I just need to be notified. I mean, I can't be told 10 days later to supply a doctor's note when I, I've never had to do that before.
Well, you have, inside the file that I was presenting, Ms. Hamer, we have a number of different discipline warnings to you. Some from Mr. Kelly, and some from previous town administrators, Mr. Noble Dean, all the way back to 2017.
Is that for sick time?
Yes.
Sick time?
Calling in sick, Brian S. Noble, October 24th, 2017. On Tuesday, October 24th, you did not call in sick until 11:49. Lack of timely notice should be considered an old call motion.
Is this because of the holiday?
What's that?
Is that because of the holiday?
I don't know if that day falls on a holiday or not.
So the article here is, what we're quoting here is Article 7. It's to be paid before, to be paid a holiday pay. I got paid my sick pay. I didn't get paid my holiday pay. So I think that's what we're here about. Article 7. That's what you keep quoting on the letter's address back to me? And that's regarding holiday pay?
Yep, so Article 7 says paid holidays. An employee must work their last scheduled working day before the last scheduled working day and after a holiday in order to receive holiday pay unless vacation or personal time is requested and approved by their supervisor. In the event an employee is unable to work the day before or after a holiday due to illness, and the employee feels the employee is abusing their sick leave benefits, the employer may require the employee to present a physician's report to the employer prior to the employee being paid for the holiday. Right? That's Article 7 of the ASME contract.
Right. How do you determine if I'm abusing my sick time? How do you determine it?
How do we determine?
How are you determining?
I believe Mr. Kelly determined it based on your track record of sick time. So you've been employed with the town for 24 years. You should have approximately 300, you would have earned 345 days to date over those years, and you have nine days left out of the 345 days left on the books. Basically 14 and a half sick days out of 15 a year. I believe that's what the town, Mr. Kelly.
Is it days? Are you going by days or hours?
Days.
Seven full days?
Seven.
Yeah, that, that, that has nothing to do with the holiday pay. I could be right about that for two years.
I think it was construed as it has something to do with abuse of sick days, right?
How far back do you go?
When you have nothing left on the books.
How far back does someone go if they've been there for 30 years? You gonna go back to 30 years? I believe that Scott has asked you for the past three years. You're going back to 2017? That doesn't sound like three years. And his request to you is three years requested, to see the records. Your quoting records.
So even if I, even if I. Even if I did the math for three years, right? And I'm not the payroll clerk to keep track of all this stuff, but even if I did, you have nine days, what did I say? You have nine days left on the books. Even if I went back three years, that would be 45 days, and you have nine left, right?
I don't understand where you're going with that. That has, that has no bearing to do with the holiday pay.
It's, it's what the employer's opinion of abuse of sick leave.
Then everybody must be abusing it. I'm telling you, everyone's abusing it. But regardless, you have to notify me if I'm abusing my sick time.
That gives us the right to ask for the doctor's note.
10 days after, is, do you think that's a?
Other people have provided it.
You've asked them 10 days later, and they've reached?
Excuse me. So, just for the record, I know she was sick. She was out. I was in my, I was in the office on a Wednesday, and she was sick then. They called and I spoke with her, and she said she was still sick. She came in on that Thursday to cover for Joe, and she was still sick. So that's why she took the Friday off. It has nothing to do with what happened in the past. She didn't abuse that particular sick day, that, that, that sick.
But it's not complying with the letter of the contract.
Yeah, so, I'll give you the contract. So, you guys are looking at Article 7. Article 25 relates to sick leave, okay? And it says, "Sick time abuse shall be addressed by progressive disciplinary action." Can you prove to me I've been, with sick leave, I've abused it? I haven't. I asked for this. Y'all letter stated, we need not give you a letter stating you're abusing it. But just gonna tell you, 10 days after you're sick, by the way, you need a note. Is that a reasonable time, do you think?
Yes.
10 days after you're sick.
Okay, how am I gonna go to the doctor?
Is saying that you need progressive discipline?
That's a separate article we need to address.
It refers to this.
Come on. It's exactly the same.
This refers to this.
One refers to the other.
This is why it's standing here.
That is the description of what abuse of sick time is.
And we shouldn't be addressing that.
If you need to, if you need to address it, first I don't say 10 days later, and then steal $158 away from her, when she's never abused sick time at all. I've never been told that she's abused sick time, never. Okay? And an article specifically in the contract says that? It's awful. I mean, it's just awful that we all have to deal with this. We've wasted so much time, so much money, overall of this, for $159. And it specifically says, if you're abusing sick time, you have to be progressively disciplined.
And this article says, if in the opinion of the employer, there's sick leave abuse, we can go forward with the next and do the analysis of the sick leave. And I think it's a good, I think it's a good suggestion from you that we do that and progress.
I think that it's a wonderful, great idea, but the simple fact is that she should have been paid. If you need to do this after the fact, you do it after the fact.
I disagree with.
You take the money away. It's not fair to take $159 away from somebody and waste taxpayers' money by spending all this time with you trying to figure out how to screw her. It's just an incredible.
Let your honor.
Can we just do this, alright? All the drama around wasting taxpayers' dollars, and reading about being harassed, and all this stuff, can we just stop with that rhetoric? Because it's really, it's, it's unproductive.
Very much so.
So, when we're having a conversation here, we're dealing with an issue, it's very black and white. We don't need the drama about being harassed, and stealing taxpayers' dollars, and wasting time. Do you know how much time gets wasted? I can promise you this, at Town Hall, of people not at their desk, not doing what they're supposed to be doing, worrying about what the other person's doing. So let's just, let's level set that here. Let's just look at this black and white and not deal with all the drama. Thank you.
Can I give you the copy of the policy for sick leave? Cause it states right in there.
Which, which one are you saying? Because I'm reading the copy of the policy, the real language I wrote right here.
For holiday or sick?
Being paid for sick time prior to a holiday or after a holiday.
That's Article 7.
That's correct.
So Article 25 explains sick, sick time. And Article 27 is explaining why sick time would be abused, and that's why you don't get paid a holiday. But maybe the sick policy needs to be, yeah. That explains how they come up with sick, if you want. That's why that was put in there. I've been here a long time, as you know. I know previous employees that have been written up for sick because they abused it, which abused means they called out sick every day before a holiday or every day after. That's not this case. I've been paid, I have pay stubs, I'll show you.
I mean, honestly, I'm looking at this, the facts here. I think the breakdown is, Joe, when she called in sick, whether you were in or out, she said, "Wanda, you need to stay home, take care of yourself." If she was sick on Wednesday, if she was sick on Thursday, you should have stayed home.
Right.
Okay? And I think that's, that's the breakdown. So Joe is the manager, whether you have a day, day off or not, you, the office is closed.
That was Thursday, had nothing to do with Friday.
Well, I'm just looking at, she was.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Joe, I'm reading, hold on, I'm reading the facts. I started feeling sick on Wednesday. Joe witnessed me not feeling well. Fact two, on Thursday, I called Joe and said, "I was not feeling well." He informed me, he had a scheduled day off, but could come cover the office until 10:00. I said, "I forgot," and I got myself together and went into work, not feeling well, to have coverage in the office, at least until Joanne arrived at 1:00. I stayed for the rest of the day. Then on Friday, you took off. What I'm saying is, if you were feeling, if you were sick on Wednesday, you called your supervisor on Thursday, that's on the supervisor's say, "You know what? Wanda, you need to stay home. Get your rest. It's more important that you get rest. We don't infect anybody else here, and we'll deal with that."
So, can I ask you this? Um, if he witnessed me sick, he knows I'm sick. Why wasn't he asked if I was sick? Or was I faking it? That's what this whole policy is about.
I don't know, Wanda.
We're not accusing anybody of faking anything, Wanda.
Okay.
At all.
So, but it sounds to me like you're saying I wasn't sick.
No.
That would be abusing your sick time.
We're saying that there's a direct article in the ASME contract that dictates paid holidays with sick days involving around before and after. That's what this is.
I have proof that I was paid before. Do you want them pay stubs as well? Because I have them. Cause if you're going back to 2017, I think you should have went back to the pay, the payroll. I clearly have been paid.
I do, I do have some written language here, and it's back on 2023, on the same day, Martin Luther King Day, you used vacation day.
Yeah.
Prior to that holiday. And then this time here, we use sick time prior to the holiday.
Right, cause I was sick.
The same exact, the same as your call.
Right. Vacation is because I wanted to use a long weekend.
You have two witnesses that.
Yep, yep. I get why, I get why. I get, I get that, and that's all legit, using vacation time or personal time before and after a holiday. Um, I, I kinda go off what Dave was saying. It just says, "On Thursday, January 11th, I called Joe and I was not feeling well. He informed me he had a scheduled day off, but could come into the office until 10:00. I, I said, 'I forgot,' and I got myself together and went into work, not feeling well, to have coverage in the office, at least Joanne arrived until 1:00 p.m. I stayed for the rest of the day." So I read through your grievance facts, and it's, I just asked the question, "Why would you stay if you were sick? If Joanne came in at 1:00, you should have used a half a day, and you would have been paid for the holiday?" Because I think it says in the contract something about two days prior to a, if you sick, two days prior.
No. You've got the language right there. It says, if you're out three days or more, you need a doctor's note.
A little background on this is that there's been issues with sick time and tardiness, so time and attendance. We've dealt with multiple days talking to the union, and the union has told us that we should strictly comply with the contract.
There you go.
That's from the union.
Absolutely.
And, and the contract here, which from 2018 hasn't changed, says, "In the event an employee is unable to work the day before or after a holiday due to illness, and the employer feels that the employee is abusing their sick leave benefits, the employer may require the employee to present a physician's report prior to being paid for the holiday."
Right.
The option was given, produce a report or use other paid time off for the day before.
So may require shouldn't even be in there. It should be is required. Is that what you're saying? Because if you're going by the contract, it says may be required. So you're may requiring it 10 days after I was sick. I did call a doctor, they said you didn't come.
No, it's at the employer's option.
Wait, what's it say there? Employer's option. Now, let's see, the employer may require. It's not saying the employer is gonna require a doctor's note.
No, but employer can require. That's what Maggie means.
So you're, so, okay, that's fine. I could have went to the doctors on Tuesday, had I been notified that I was gonna pay the holiday. I wasn't notified 10 days after.
But isn't payroll bi-weekly? So how do we know what you're putting in for payroll until 10 days later or 14 days later?
The end of the payroll week was the sick day. And the next starting of the new pay week was Monday, a holiday. And don't tell me no one's not watching my time cut, because they are. They watch the punches, they watch this. They would have known I was out sick. That was the end of the pay week. The last paid period, week, was the 12th. I was sick that day. I got paid my sick pay. Monday was the beginning of the new week.
So you're, you're essentially asking us to deviate from what's in the union contract?
No, I'm showing you with the contract states.
Right.
It says you've been notified of abuse, and then it says if you abuse.
Are you asking us to not follow the letter of the law? I think that's what we're doing, right? We're following the letter of the law.
But I've been paid before, prior to.
I understand, but that doesn't mean it was right then. You're saying we had it since before.
Okay, so how am I to know this?
I don't know, it's your contract, right? I mean.
You're looking at it differently. I've been paid in the past for a holiday. How would I know that I'm gonna be required a note 10 days after? How would I know this? Had I known this prior to, you changed the policy now, I don't care, but had I known.
It's in your contract.
It's not in my contract. I, I, it's in the contract that says, "We'll notify you, you've been abusing it." There you go, that's common knowledge. Then it tells you, if you're abusing it because you've been notified, we're not paying you until you get a note.
So what we have here, Article 7, that you're telling me that's not valid?
It is valid.
Okay.
But it refers to another article. Yeah. Scott, do you want any of this article stuff?
I got it, I got it here.
You've got 25?
Yep.
Which states, if you abuse the sick time, we'll notify you. So then this refers to, you've been notified, you're gonna supply a note. Had I been notified, I would have got a doctor's note. I would have spent the $30 to go to the doctors, get a note to not lose $159.
I mean, I look at it.
It does not say notification in Article 7. It just says, "In the opinion of the employer."
But it, it states sick leave. It states sick abuse time, which refers to Article 25. The sick article in the union contract.
That's the action that the employer can then take if the employer determines that there's sick leave.
Then write me a note that I'm abusing my sick leave, then I'll know. That, that's basically what you're saying. I'm abusing it, you're notifying me after the fact. I'm not a mind reader. I know my kids think I am, but I'm not.
And all we asked for was either a doctor's note.
Right.
Or use paid time off.
But I was sick.
And that's what we've been doing with everybody.
So you want me to use vacation time when I was sick? Cause I burned my sick time.
Or get a doctor's.
Call the doctor.
I did call the doctor, they're not gonna give me a note. I asked them on your behalf, I've given a note.
Number one, she didn't go to the doctor, so how do you get a note from? So I'm just gonna, so.
Look, here's what I'm trying to.
Let me finish. So she's gonna show up at the doctor, say, "Yeah, this is 10 days later, Dave. I, I need a note because I was sick last week, uh, last Thursday." No doctor's gonna give you a, a note for that. That's, that's totally ridiculous.
Very fond and said enough.
They're ridiculous. That doesn't make any sense at all. And number two is that she, she didn't go to the doctor, she went home and she rested. And I know for a fact that she has another job that she didn't show up to on that day, the day before, or whatever, because she was sick. Cause I saw her, and she was ill. So, it's the point of her being ill, and I know what you, you're trying to follow the policy, but guess what? She didn't get the, the doctor's note because she wasn't asked to get a doctor's note. As a supervisor, he didn't ask, and I didn't ask as an elected official. So, it doesn't make any sense. I think she should be paid.
And, and Tom, we.
I don't think it's deviating from the contract, in other words.
Okay, now, I'm looking at it pretty black and white.
Well, you look at the other part.
But I understand that. I understand that piece of it, Wanda. I totally get.
That's black and white in that reading.
I get the human, I get the human aspect of it. We've got a contract, right? I, I hear ad nauseam from unions all the time, "Well, it's not in the contract. It's not in the contract. I can't do this because it's not in the contract." "Well, I'm not doing that because it's not in the contract." So I, what I take is, we've gotta follow the contract. We can't cherry pick. Well, you know, we're gonna follow the contract for this one, but we're not gonna follow it for that one. So, I, I believe we gotta set a standard where we either follow the contract or we don't. And when we, we've been, there's been a lot of gray area. And I think that's why we have a culture in this town, in this overall Town Hall complex of people coming and going as they want. I'm not, I'm just saying in general, okay? This is, I, I've remained silent on this whole issue. And we've been dealing with stuff going on. We're trying to get this place back in order, okay? And if this is part of it, I apologize, but we've gotta start, as an administration, following the letter of the law, because it's brought, it's done to us on the same side. So, you know, that's.
So I'm the example, so I'm the, so I'm the example.
It's not personal, don't take it personal.
Well, I've been paid before.
I, I understand that one.
I'm not reminding you, I wouldn't know that I would need a note.
I understand.
Had I been told Tuesday, honest to God, I would have went Tuesday to the doctors, I would have left. I would have left here and went right to the doctor. I can't 10 days later. That'd be lying.
Can we discuss this in executive session amongst us? It's on executive session. We do have an executive session posted.
Can I just say one more thing?
You can say whatever you want, Wanda.
Thank you. So Article 7 says abuse, abusing their sick leave, that, that wording is stated in there from the sick article. We feel you're abusing, that you will be written up. That's how someone knows.
So I look at that other article, Wanda, to be honest with you. The, that article, it's, it, I mean, your union reps here, so I would ask him to comment on it. But it says, "If a person is absent for a period of three consecutive days or demonstrates a pattern of frequent sick time use, the employer has the right to require a medical certificate, grant an additional sick time. Sick time abuse shall be addressed by progressive disciplinary action." But is that for something that's always three consecutive days? And you're banging out three consecutive days?
No, it says, "Or demonstrates a pattern of frequent sick, sick use." Or a pattern of sick use.
That's for general sick leave use.
Right.
I know, we're talking.
You just happened to fall on a holiday.
The union and this town agreed to a specific incident going around holidays and has a separate article for.
Under holiday, not under sick. So this abuse, considered abuse, one day, two day, three day, constant abuse, is where the wording came in for the holiday abuse. That's how it was put in there. I've been here a long time. Now, I, this didn't change. I know people who've been written up. They called out every holiday, Monday before or after a holiday, so they can have a longer time. They were written up. You're abusing it, so now every single time you're out, you need a doctor's note.
This is every time someone bends out sick before or after a holiday, we have the right to ask for a doctor's note.
What's a reasonable amount of time, in your opinion? What's a reasonable amount of time?
I'd have to verify 10 days and see, because it also depends on payroll. I'd have to look at that.
So you think 10 days is okay to request some?
Well, I mean, I guess we're assuming that you've got the doctor's note, I don't know.
I didn't go to the doctors, I was sick.
So.
So you're assuming I got a doctor's note?
We're assuming that the employees of this union understand, know the contract, know the rules. The supervisors know the rules, you know? So I guess Joe learned, right? Moving forward, if one of your employees calls out sick the day before, Friday before a holiday, you now know, Tom, you now know, make sure you get a doctor's note.
May be required. So 10 years, so will be required is an excellent point to make in the next contract. May be required 10 days later. I've been here for over 10 years. It's, it's never been an issue.
Again.
Never. We've had a, we've had a great office environment. It's never been an issue. Um, and certainly, I just, unreasonable 10 days.
The notification of the need from the note wouldn't come from Mr. Korea or the board. It would, uh, because the contract is from the Board of Selectmen through the town administrator to payroll. So that's how that orderly function goes.
I get, I get, I get that, but from a practicality standpoint.
My main supervisor wouldn't know if I was abusing it? He wouldn't need to, need the note? These pol, everything's changing in this town. It's crazy. Something I know is now different.
As far as the legality of the contract goes, you work for, under the Board of Selectmen, through the town administrator, and you're assigned to the Board of Health.
Right. Who supervise me? Who sees my day-to-day actions? Who knows me in and out?
But time and attendance goes through the treasurer collector's office.
Okay, so you think 10 days is a reasonable amount of time? I'm gonna, I'm gonna give that to my doctor, see if they like that. Cause it's, it's unreasonable, is what it is. One day, maybe two? I think I go to, went to the doctors maybe in two days and let them know that I was out sick for four days? Maybe they would have gave me a note. I don't know. $30 would have cost me. But instead, it's costing me, you know, more. And everybody's time, when this, it's clear as day.
Don't worry about the time.
You're reading, yeah, but you're reading what you think it comes down to. But the sick leave, it states sick.[1740.06]